Thank you all for joining us. The Columbian is pleased to welcome candidates for Clark County Council District Two, I believe. I'm Greg Jane, editorial page editor. And I'll let the editorial board members introduce themselves. Craig?
Craig Brown, I'm the editor of the Columbian.
Hi, I'm Colleen Keller, I'm the Columbian's assistant news editor and I'm a member of the editorial board.
And Ben?
Ben Campbell, publisher of the Columbian.
Great, and let's see, as mentioned, we are recording the videotaping this. We will post it unedited on our website for the benefit of our readers. And we also have a reporter sitting in on this meeting. They won't be asking questions here, but may want to speak with you later. I think that is the housekeeping, so now we can get on to the important part, the candidates. Go ahead and take one to two minutes, introduce yourselves and explain why you are running for this position. And we'll start with Shartisha.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for hosting this. I am Shartisha Roberts and I'm running for County Council District Two. I'm running because we need people in office that, you know, represent the day-to-day, people that deal with, you know, high housing prices, public safety, affordability with housing. I don't believe that we should have to live with other people to be able to afford a home. And just wanted to create positive change. I work in healthcare currently, but I've also worked in transportation. So I do believe with those industries, I'm always putting the community first. I'll be able to take those skill sets that I have learned and put this within the county council. Also realizing that policies and things need to be looked at. We should be followed or look at policies that need to be changed. And with my HR administrative background, I understand how that works. And also being a team player and bringing in other people to help with that process as well. So I'm hoping to serve County Council District Two. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Michelle?
Hi, I'm Michelle Belkot. I'm running for County Council District Two as well. The reason why I decided to run was our nation is in a lot of trouble right now. And we're seeing that at the county level, too. Inflation's at a high, high level that we've never seen before. I know because I'm a working mother. Crime is up and public safety and support is way down because of the whole defund police mentality. Homelessness has also gotten much worse in Clark County and it's like we're turning into Portland. But I'm hopeful and I believe that it can be turned around. But it's going to take a lot of leadership, proven leadership. And that's what I've been doing and living out for 24 years as an officer in the military and a civil servant. Some of the solutions are going to take some big projects, like a new jail, a new bridge, new solutions to homelessness. I have 20 years of saving taxpayers' money on multimillion-dollar contracts. And I plan to do the same for the D2 citizens of Clark County. None of my opponents have this kind of experience and Julie Olson didn't bring that kind of leadership, so I decided to run.
Great, thank you. And I should mention, you're running for the position that currently held by Julie Olson, who is not seeking reelection. And Kim, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kim Hamlich and I am too, running for District Two Council. I have decided to run because our county in the next four years are going to face some big issues. We do have a shortage of sheriffs, a jail that is in really bad shape, prosecuting attorney that's behind on cases. We have homeless issue. We also have some development in our comp plan and our growth management that we need to look at. And all these are very important to our community. When I was looking at this position, I feel it's a full-time position. And I will work that full-time position to make sure that the issues do get solutions of some kind with communication and teamwork.
Great, thank you. And again, thanks to each of you for joining us. Let's start out, I think you all mentioned on some level homelessness is a big issue. How should the county go about addressing that? What should the county's role be in that? And we'll start with Kim.
Wow, good question, big question. As I am learning a lot about the homelessness in our, in our society, in our community, it's a lot of different things. I, matter of fact, walked a couple shelters today that the city has put on the safe park and the outpost. Both are very interesting that we do not have in the county. And as I'm walking them and I'm thinking, why don't we have these services in our county to help? A lot of different things, our sheriffs, it'd be great to have them have somewhere to put people who may be sleeping in their car or motorhome or whatever that may be, but also help our community. It's really interesting when you start digging into it because Washington State is fifth, fifth in the United States in homelessness. We have 23, if you look at the state itself, 23,000 homeless. What does that mean? The HUD monies obviously, you know, follow the homes and hopefully help in that direction. But we also have a percentage that have a drug problem that we need to look in and find issues for and rehab and those kinds of things. We need to find solutions for those. It is, it is a big, big issue.
Would you recommend similar facilities at the county level?
Of course, for transitional housing, you need that. I mean, we want these people to be sheltered and have a roof over their head. But, but to do so, you know, you can't just put them right into a home right off the bat. You do need to get them, I mean, some of them have been homeless for a while. And just looking at those facilities today and what they can produce and hopefully make a difference in was pretty, pretty mind-blowing, to be honest with you. I, Jamie and the city is doing a great job in that direction. And I would like to see the county have some, some part in that direction. But we also need to deal with what we do have and that's, you know, drug use. That is rampant. We do have to look at that problem, too, and what kind of solutions we can find. I think we need to look and find the solutions and work them into what our community needs.
Thank you. Michelle, your thoughts on that?
I think our strategy for Clark County needs improvement. It seems like it's becoming strangely similar to Portland. It's where the government takes more control and more money, but nothing's getting solved. The Housing First Initiative has and will continue to fail as it's shown in our state and all along the West Coast, really. We need to do, we need to pivot to a reduction-based strategy rather than throwing more dollars in services that are just enabling this issue and not solving the problem. I plan on putting my contracting experience to work to save the resources and efforts. Don't reduce homelessness, it gets cut. If it does reduce it, it'll get more funding. We don't want Clark County to be another Portland, so we need to act now before it's too late. We also need to be bringing law enforcement and mental health leaders like CSNW to the table, to the Echo Group. They've been excluded in that conversation. So that's my recommendations.
Okay, and Shartisha?
I think we should look at homelessness as a symptom of there are things that are broken in the system. These people that are homeless are actually Clark County residents. So we need to look at it like that and have compassion to why they're in this place. Whether it be access to jobs, whether it's rising costs. Like if you, if there's no access to jobs and if we keep raising rent. Actually Vancouver or Clark County has some of the highest rents in the United States. So those are things that we should be looking at is how do we create more affordable housing? How do we address a lot of the symptoms and reasons why their homelessness exists? Which is, you know, drug use, jobs, access to jobs, access to food, mental health. I mean, can you imagine not being able, you're living paycheck to paycheck and don't know where your next meal is going to come through? So of course that would impact your mental health, that it has nothing to do with drugs as well. So I would like to work with the city, even though District Two doesn't have a city, obviously. But we could work with the city and adopt some of those things that they are doing within the cities with the county as well. I think we should be collaborative and work with other community partners that address homelessness. And I'll go from there. I think it's such a complex issue that we're going to need more things to be done. And it's not just an easy fix. So that's my take on homelessness.
Thank you. Craig?
So one of the things I hear people say is that growth and sprawl is taking away our farmlands and our valuable open space. Other folks say that we need to have more space to build more housing so it'll be more affordable. What's your take on, on that and how do we balance these two competing interests? Maybe Michelle would like to answer that question first.
Well, Shartisha brought up a good point. Rent is out of control, buying a house is out of control around here. I've been talking to BIA and just to get the permitting to buy a house is $92,000. And that's like digging, that's like before digging the hole, that's just permitting. So that's just an astronomical amount of money that goes into, without even, not even having a house to begin with. So that's, we have to fix the permitting issue in Clark County, which is an ongoing person, or ongoing problem. And it's been a problem, I guess they have a large turnover, staff turnover as well, which is not helping things.
Now, just interrupt for a second, that, that cost, is that primarily driven by the county or is that a state issue?
That's the county, because every county has different permitting costs. Like, since I work with, in the construction realm, different counties are, they cost, have different permitting costs. Like in Clark County, for instance, electrical permits are the most expensive in Washington State. And when I asked why, no one could answer. So it's, it's a very interesting, we have some interesting challenges in this county. So I'm, I am as well concerned about affordable housing. I have two little boys and I'm wondering if they're going to be able to stay in this area. Can they afford a house when the houses, the housing market is just crazy? And what was the rest of it?
What about land use, though? Would you, would you say that we need to set more, convert more land to housing? Or would you want to protect open space and farmland?
I think there needs to be a balance of both. I don't think that we should just have sprawl all over the place. I've been talking to farmers, the farmers, Washington Farmers Bureau, and there's water rights issues that they're very concerned about with our state as well. Because they're basically trying to discourage farming in this state so that more houses can be built. There needs to be a balance. And I see that it's kind of getting out of hand when it comes to this.
Okay, Shartisha, what do you think?
I think land use is important, especially now that the growth plan is coming up. We all want a brighter future, you know, for our children. I have an 11-year-old son as well and I want him to thrive in Clark County, just like I am. And so with that, we should be addressing with how we are placing the lands, how we, like if someone, if they slot off a little land in part of a big farm, you know, or where we, where they want to put, place train tracks. You know, we have to be mindful of where we're putting houses as well. So I think we should be addressing that. I do agree that we should be investing in our farms. We should be able to sustain ourselves and then also be able to produce to bring more money into the county as, you know, we can ship our goods to other areas within the state or within the country. I also do believe that we should be looking at housing. We are growing. So how do we address the growth? And with that is, you know, planning. So there are things that we need to address and also bringing more jobs, too. Another way of investing back into Clark County is, you know, diversifying what we're actually developing. I know, I mean luckily I can work from home, but I would not like to commute back to Portland if I don't have to. So it's nice to invest and bring jobs in Clark County as well so we can sustain ourselves.
Okay, Kim, what do you think?
This is a really, really tough question for me because balance is so important. You know, affordable housing or middle housing, farms, we, we need to have a balance of all of them. So I'll give you a few examples. We have Heritage Farms here, right in the heart of Hazeldale. You all know where that is. And you look at that and so what do we do with that? That's in the urban growth boundary. So do we turn that into housing because we need more affordable housing and more high density? Or do we keep it a farm? We got busy farms that is just right outside the urban growth boundary. So what do we do with that? I mean, it is a very big balance. But I don't want to see what is happening, what I feel is happening right now. And that is picking spots where, where there isn't infrastructure to do these high-density housings on the umbrella of affordable housing. Because you may put in two or three houses on a 6,000-square-foot lot, they're still going to cost half a million. That is not affordable housing. So how do we get that? And that is a really good question and it's something that is going to be coming up. We just had the Buildable Lands Report. What did that say and what did that bring to the table? Like I said, it's a big deal. We have 179th Street, where I was hoping that was going to be able to have business and industry. And now they're selling it off to developers for more homes. What is that doing to our infrastructure and what is that doing to our farms and doing to our environment? I mean, all these are questions that need to be answered. I think they're there, but you're going to have to work really closely and make sure that the answer is correct. And what do the county people, are the community really want? What do they want to look at in 50 years or 10 years or 15 years? I mean, it's a really tough question, I believe. And it will not be answered here, I'm not, by any means. But I'm looking at all that because you have to take all that into consideration. I had, I spoke to a fire chief, matter of fact, this is a great example. Fire chief up in the Royal Department, up on five. And we were talking and there's a 600 home subdivision coming in on 179th and 50th. Well, how, how is the county looking at that to be at the, as a, as a fireman? How are they taking that into consideration? Because that's another 600 homes in his area that he has to protect. Does he have enough staff? Does he have enough trucks? Does there need to be another fire, you know, station somewhere close? I mean, these are all things that need to be brought into the, the whole plan. And we talk about a third bridge to the west, but that also needs to be coming to the comp plan and planned for. All these things are very important decisions. So I hope I answered that question for you and it's a tough one.
Thank you.
Colleen?
I believe that in your opening statements, all three of you mentioned the Clark County jail. What would you like to see or do you believe needs to be done at the jail? Do you believe it needs to be completely replaced? Would you instead favor some form of expansion? What would you be proponents of? Shartisha, why don't we start with you?
I think it's very important to invest in our sheriff's office. And one is also replacing or at least remodeling the jail. We want our sheriffs or the people that are working there to feel safe as well. And the people who are staying there, you know, at least live in a decent space. And as far as the, can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Wait, what, what do you think needs to be done? I mean, we've, there've been a number of reports about the jail and, you know, price tags for replacement somewhere in, say, the $400 million range, et cetera. Is that something you would support or do you think there are intermediate steps that perhaps need to be done?
I think the immediate step that needs to be done is to at least remodel the current jail to make it safe for the employees and the folks that are there. Because if they don't feel safe to do their job, it's going to be hard to get people to want to work for the sheriff department if they don't even feel safe. So I think it's very important to invest as well and build that sense of security.
Okay, Kim, how about you?
Toward the jail. It's in really bad shape. And it's going to take a lot to fix, whatever you choose to do. We have a jail work center that's not being utilized. Yeah, it's understaffed. Some of those staff people are taking on two positions because we don't have enough staffing. It's, it's not safe and it can't be a good working environment for any of the sheriff staff there. But not only that, the inmates have to live in that, too. I would have, it would have to go out, I would have to ask the community. They're going to have to make the decision. It's going to cost money no matter what we do. But it needs to be done because it's going to be part of what we need to do to fight crime. I mean, we need somewhere for our sheriffs to be able to put the people they pick up. It is very frustrating for them now to deliver someone to the jail and realize that they're only going to be there for two hours and then set loose. And when they worked so hard to, you know, get them there. Sometimes chasing them and doing what they need to do to get them there. So the jail's in really bad shape. COVID has not made it better. It's not a friendly place. It's got four hospital beds when we need a lot more than that. So it will take money. But the community is going to have to figure out how they want to spend that money. Do they want to do a new build? Do they want to remodel? I looked at the 2018 report and I've looked at those plans. Not a too bad of a plan, but how much and where do we want to spend that money? That is the question that I think the community is going to have to ask. But you have to look at the situation as it is and it does need help. Whatever they choose, it does need help and probably as soon as possible.
So when you say, asking the community, would you favor putting that on the ballot? Put a proposal for an entire new jail on the ballot or?
Either one, I mean, we need to look at it. I mean, the new jail, where would we put it? I mean, there's a lot of questions when you do the new jail. But if you looked at the jail and if you headed west a little bit, that road there is not being utilized. So can we do something there to maybe expand it and give them the beds they need? Or the dock that they need to bring the prison, you know, the inmates in? Can we go up? I, I mean, I did ask this question. Is it stable enough to go up a couple more? I know Otto has a plan to do different module kind of situations, you know, move this to this and this to that. But I don't know if that's going to work either. I mean, it, it's another one of those tough questions we need to look at. I mean, we're not even utilizing the, the work center, the jail work center down there by the port. It's completely empty except for the people they have to have run the food and the laundry.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And I was just curious if you would put it on the ballot?
I would. I would have to put it out for a vote. I, I don't know if there's any other way that you can do it except to see what they want to do.
And then, sorry, didn't interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead. And Michelle, what are your thoughts on the jail?
I do have visited the jail. It's 40-plus years old. It's, it was probably great in its day, but our population growth is, I mean, we've grown so much. So, you know, you put population growth and then unfortunately, crime has gone up without population growth. So it's not, it's not big enough for capacity. And when you build a building, every building that's built, it has a lifespan. And that lifespan is definitely exceeded its lifespan when I went and took a tour. Another issue because of the age of the building and some of the doors and fences, they have to do custom repairs on the jail because things are just so old. They're, so they're trying to retrofit this old jail with kind of like these haphazard types of repairs. Like for instance, the day that I was down there, the fence was broken and they were having to like move it with a couple of the deputies. That's not safe for them and that's not safe for the folks that are in jail. The door, I'm always very interested in construction, the construction of a building and the cost of those things. But the door that I walked into, I looked behind me and there was a piece of cardboard that was taped to the bottom of the door as a way, as a, as a way to repair. I asked, I said, well, how, how long are these repairs taking once you request them? And they were saying the average is a month to two months. That's not acceptable when you're having safety issues, potential safety issues with a fence closing or a door not locking behind a deputy. That's putting everybody at risk, in my opinion. Another issue with the, with the jail, nobody has consulted the deputies. I've talked to several of them, at least four or five, five of them. They have not been asked, like, you know, what's the average capacity you have on a normal night or day? So they just spitball this amount for the jail, but they haven't talked to any of the, any of the deputies that work day-to-day in that facility. Shouldn't you be kind of working with those people to develop a scope of work based on capacity? Like, you know, what's the average? And, and those folks, they have a really good idea on how many people are in there on average day-to-day now with population growth and also with COVID. So there needs to be more communication with law enforcement all the way around. From the jail to the deputy shortage, I mean, it's, nobody's talking. There's a big communication breakdown between the council and law enforcement. So yes, I do think that the jail needs to be replaced. It's, they're like maxed to capacity and for most part, they have people in jail waiting to go to the Washington State Mental Health Facility. So they just hold them until there's a spot opened. And they have multiple, the day that I was there, they had six people in one room that should have only held three. If that gives you an idea. It's a very interesting experience. I highly encourage people to go check out the jail.
Would you favor making, like, on the county council, if you were elected, leading the charge to replace the jail? Or is that something that you believe should be, go on a ballot?
I think first they need to talk to law enforcement to actually talk about what the scope of work for building that building looks like. Because if you don't have any specs, you have no idea what that estimate will be to build that building. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done before I think that could even be put on a ballot and/or discussed. They don't really, the plan is not good as it stands today.
Okay.
Thank you. Ben, did you have any time?
I'm sorry, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I want to say, since we're talking about the sheriff's office, and again, and all three of you have alluded to the fact that the struggles they've been facing for some time now with staffing. What would you like to see the county council do to help the sheriff's office? And Kim, let's start with you.
First thing I'd bring them up to, the staffing salary of Vancouver Police. They're way underfunded in that respect. And therefore, we will be losing more if we don't. I believe I was like 30% more at Vancouver Police Department than they're paying here at the sheriff's. And that, that would be hard because you could just go across the street and get 30% more money. It'd be kind of worth it. I did a drive-along last night with the deputy and to talk to him because I really wanted to understand their plight and, and what they're facing every day. The staffing shortage is real. I mean, we have North County, which is a big part of our community, that if they're understaffed for the night, they can't even send a deputy up there. And now you know, if there's an issue up there, it's going to take you a good 25, 30 minutes to get yourself up there. That's crazy to me. Washougal, that way one deputy goes. So they're very, very understaffed and working a lot. We can't continue to expect them to work these hours. And their neighbor during jurisdiction there is making a lot more and expect them to stay with us. We have to look at that. I haven't looked at the budget. Everyone says, well, it's the budget, it's their fault. Well, I don't think it is. I mean, there has to be something we need to look at. And if it is, then let's give them more money in the budget. These guys work hard for us and they protect us every day. And I want to feel safe in my home. I want to feel safe when I drive down the road. I mean, last night we had a guy drive by without no taillights at 10:30 at night. And I said, you're going to go, no, can't do that kind of stop because there was a stabbing over in 7-Eleven. So they all had to head that way. So imagine living day-to-day that way and seeing that. So imagine living day to day that way um and seeing that and not being able to help when you have that. That is your profession. It's a difficult, difficult choice, but we do need to to bring up the funding. We need to support them and we need to make them number one in the in the state. We we need to have people say, you know what, I'm gonna go work for Van uh Clark County because they treat their officers right. That's what I think we should do. It's it's a difficult thing.
So Tisha, how about you?
Um I think um and I'm in recruiting right now, so um recruiting is very difficult in in every um sector. Um but I I believe with the um sheriff's department and the community, um because we represent Clark County as a whole, not just the sheriff's department, um that we need to start working on ways to build the relationship back on both sides. Um I feel like the sheriffs don't um feel safe or they don't feel respected. And I also feel like um the community um doesn't feel safe or trusted either. So how do we um build that gap? So then people do want to work um for um the sheriff's department. I think uh public safety is very important and the sheriff's, what they do um is very important and we both need each other. It's not just one or the other. It's both of us. And um I just think trying to work towards building um safer spaces for both um parties. And also, I um agree with making sure that we're paying them adequately because it is a a hard job. It's a lot of um work and they should be compensated for that work, but um but if they don't feel safe or they feel like it's a a toxic um environment, you know, it's going to be harder to get people um in the door. So it's more than just throwing money at it. Um people have to want to work there because they care. And I think now too um with the um sheriff's running, um like more now more than ever, we should, all of us should be paying attention um and talking to them as well and learning more about them too. Um one of us will be able to work with them and um start building that relationship as well to show su- support um to to the sheriff's department because, like I said, both we need them and the community needs them and they need us too. The sheriff's department needs the community too because that's why they're here.
Okay, thanks. And Michelle, how about you?
Um obviously, this whole defund the police movement is having um producing terrible outcomes around our county. I too believe that they should be.
Just I I have to ask you. I am unaware of anybody locally who's ever promoted defund the police. I I I did I miss something? I I'm not aware of any city or any official who's been promoting defund police.
I'm talking about the culture that's been um happening around here with the different protests and things like that in the community. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the county council or municipalities. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the culture of what's happening.
Has there actually been a reduction in in funding for the sheriff's office?
No, but they're not being paid commensurate to Vancouver City Police or Ridgefield, so it's been a revolving door of deputies leaving. Just in the month of May, we lost five deputies. I'm not sure if everyone's aware of that. We had one retirement, one went to the fire station and then the rest um either went to local police enforcement or out of state.
And I'm sorry, go ahead. You sorry, didn't interrupt. Go ahead.
Oh, it's okay. So we've lost, just in the month of May, we we lost quite a few deputies because they are not getting paid commensurate because Vancouver City Police on average gets paid twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars more than the Clark County Sheriff's deputies. And their bonuses are much more extensive as well. They recently did give the deputies bonuses, but if you look at some of the um the catches that come with those bonuses, they have to be in their position for a very long time before they get the latter part of that um that bonus. So.
So I was gonna say, um I I think all of you mentioned they they should be paid better uh to attract and and retain uh officers. Where should that money come from? And we'll start with Michelle.
Well, I actually had a conversation with a deputy recently. Since there are so many vacancies, um how about taking a look at the at the vacancies, the FTEs that aren't filled and taking that money to give the existing staff a bump in salary increase until they figure out where the rest of the money could come from? Uh maybe look, take a look at ARPA funds to give them uh potential bonuses or increases in pay as well. So those are a few of my ideas.
But what about what about long term?
That's something that needs to be looked at before long term can be addressed and not just automatically taxing taxpayers.
Uh Kim, where, sorry, go. Where should money come from to for the sheriff's office?
Well, we need to look at all things. I agree with Michelle on we need to look at all the funding that we do, but long term we need to start looking at our the one percent that the county can take yearly. Um it's a cost of living um thing we're talking here. We don't it costs money for services. And so we need to start, if we decide that we do not want to add any more taxes, then you need to ask ourselves, what services do we want to give up? Um I'm not willing to give up the police or the sheriffs. I I they're very important to me. So if we're not going to look at raising taxes or asking for our one percent, then do we want to take it from parks or the roads? I mean, you have to look at all those things together. Um it's important that we do. We should always be um good stewards of our money um and look at all those kinds of things, but we also need to make sure that we, when we have an opportunity to take a cost of living raise, as I call it, um we take it. I I think it's really important that we look at that. There's there's ways we can do it, but but they need to be compensated. Otherwise, we're going to continue to bleed sheriffs and we are going to have even worse crime and less safety on our streets. Um it's just a going down a tunnel that you don't want to go. So I think you have to look at everything. Be good stewards with the money. Look at the budget, see where you can take the extra, but if you need to, take that one percent that you can take yearly. That's what I believe.
Okay, thank you. You're sure Tisha, where should money come from to fund the sheriff's office?
Um I agree with looking at um you know, the budget as a whole and to see if there are things that we can cut, but at the same time, we also have to continue to invest in ourselves. So I do believe that we should be um continuing with the one percent, um just like when where we work, every year we get a a raise and we have to address the the cost of living. So it doesn't make sense that um we are not addressing. And it's not that um big of an impact as people are um trying to portray that it is. Um at the same time, you can't say you want to invest or you want these services, but then don't want to do anything to invest in those those services and then complain that things aren't um working the way that they should. So I think we should be looking at all if we could save money in some areas, but definitely we do, we should be looking at taking the one percent.
And to go back to Michelle, uh the other two candidates uh specifically mentioned the one percent increase. It it say this year, if you were on the council, when it comes budget time, would you be in favor of taking that one percent tax levy increase?
Uh I have to take a look at that before I could make a decision. I had to do some research, look more into the budget. See how what the cause and effect of that would look like.
Yeah, that's a fair answer. Uh Ben, did you have anything?
Yeah, uh first off, thank you everyone for being here. Um so some of the topics we've talked about are very complex and I think they'll require uh collaboration and effective communication. So I'm wondering, how do you all view the county's relationship with cities and other entities within our region? I'll start with uh Shartisha.
Um I think it's very important to um build relationships and be collaborative and work together. We all have a common goal. Um and we all are impacted whether we live in this within the city limits or in the county. We all have a common goal to make this county the best that it can be for um all the constituents that live here. And so I think it's important to be more collaborative and work together versus just one person um trying to carry the load and do all the work. Um and also respect and understand that people do have expertise and they do have different um knowledge base. So how do we bring that together to help um improve the um county as a whole?
Thank you. Uh Kim?
That's a really good, that's one way that we're we're really failing in that in that area exactly, communication with everybody. Uh we do not talk to our cities. We just expect them to follow us. And and it's really sad that we do because they have some really good ideas and we could all learn from each other and make this community a better place. Um that we do not have boundaries on our on our our county. Uh we're all one and we need to learn to work as one and that will take communication. Now, we are not going to always get along, but we have to find that common space that we can all say, this works for me, this works for you, let's do it. Let's get our community back on track to where it needs to be. It's really, and if I can do anything in four years, if I can bring the communication back to the county and the council and our cities and every other stakeholder, I I would feel great.
Thank you. And Michelle?
Well, I think that we could definitely do a better job of communicating, um specifically how long District Two redistricting took. That was uh an interesting uh kind of a fiasco that took months and months and months. And I know some people that were involved in that that reached out to other counties across the state actually to see if their redistricting um had the same level of frustration involved in it as well. And that's and that's not the case. I think like I, you know, all of us mentioned the sheriff's department. That they they have not been listened to. The sheriff's guild's been ignored. So I think just communicate focusing on communication first in the county departments, that would be a start. And and really needs to be looked at because it seems like a lot of the decisions in the county have been being made in a vacuum and different divisions aren't talking to each other. Um so I'm sure that transcends into um other, working with other counties in other parts of our state.
Thank you. Um I I'm just curious, trying to get a sense kind of where you all are somewhat philosophically. So I'm I'm curious uh did you support statewide mask mandates and at the height of the pandemic? And would you have urged the city council to uh to stand against those? Uh we'll start with Michelle.
Did I, uh can you repeat that question again? Did I support them?
Uh yeah, were you in favor of statewide mask mandates?
No, I wasn't.
Should the, would on the council, would you have voted to not follow them or to to not follow vaccine mandates for for county employees?
Yeah, I I talked about that actually when I ran for school board quite a bit. I did not. Um I think people should have medical choice and not be forced into vaccination or wearing masks. I still support that now. I supported the mini initiative um that they tried to get through the county. Um so no, I don't support those. I support medical choice for your families and that you make the decision what's best for you.
Kim, what were your thoughts on mask mandates?
Um well, like all of us, you know, when Covid hit, it was pretty scary. We, none of us had gone through that before. And so at that time, uh masks, they thought would be the best solution to help us stay safe. Uh was that the right decision? Uh you know, I I don't know, but I supported them and I did wear them. Uh would I wear them now? No, I I don't think that's best for the community, but we know a lot more. So, you know, hindsight.
If if you were on the council, would you have have stood against mandates?
No, I would have, I would have probably been with the council uh with that. I think we, I would not have been against it. No, I I'm assuming that.
Sorry, you're Shartisha.
Um so I work in healthcare and we see the effects of of Covid um and how it impacts um all of us, especially the the nurses and the um first responders and the people who deal with direct patient care. And um so I still uh I still actually wear my my mask. I'm probably one of the only few that still wear my mask um in the gym. Um but I I do believe it it did save um lives and I would follow if if we're going to be public service and we're representing the community and if um public health is one of our things that we support, we have to stand behind um public health. So if they're um, you know, issuing mandates for masks and stuff, I would fall and stand behind um and support them because that's what we're supposed to do.
Thank you. Um Craig or Colleen, anything else?
Uh Tisha, what's the county's general fund budget? How about you?
Um I I don't have that information.
Okay, Michelle, do you know?
You're on mute, Michelle.
You're on mute, sorry.
Sorry about that. It's a habit, work habit. I believe it was six hundred and sixty-four million, no, uh six hundred and fifty million, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh does that sound right, Kim?
Yeah, it sounds, yeah. Matter of fact, I looked at it the other day and was like, my brain was exploding. I was trying to find something in there and yeah, I this sounds about about right, but it's uh it it it's it's a hefty one.
Okay, thank you.
Um any other questions, anybody? Then, um well, I think we'll go to um give us your final pitch for why voters should support you and feel free to mention any endorsements. And we haven't, we didn't even get to the bridge, believe it or not, but uh we should wrap this up. Um we'll start with Kim. Give us your final pitch.
Been in the community for forty years, love the community, has always been my, pretty much my always home. Uh lived here more than I haven't lived here. I work hard, I communicate and I can work full time. I think this position needs a full-time person to look at every issue we have. The buildable land at report itself was three hundred and thirty-three pages of very boring uh reading. As I said the other day, I spent like three hours of looking at that budget and the expenses and and expenditures and and the additions and it's it takes a lot of work, takes a lot of time. And I feel I would be best at that um in that position. And as far as endorsements, you know, I'm most proud of every one of my neighbors endorse me. So when I come to endorsements, that's, that to me is ultimately the ones that I want to to take that from. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um Shartisha?
I, what I'm hoping to bring to um the the county is um collaboration, um understanding that um all have a piece um of the puzzle to make this county um great. And I'm by no means an expert in all um subjects, so I'm willing to um, you know, listen to all sides and I'm willing to you know, take pieces and um bridge things together to make sure that we are actually effectively um serving and making um policies and following things to make this um county what it is. Um I feel like it's important to um to to listen um and learn and um give back. Um also, while we're we're growing and expanding, we also need to be looking at ways that we're impacting um the environment, finding innovative ways to um bring jobs, um looking at land um uses. Um and with with the community, I have a lot of the community's um um support. Um and um I just think it's important to um pick me because I I'm willing to serve. Um I have an open heart and um I just want to make Clark County the best that it can be um besides all of um what's going on right now. And I just really feel like the government throughout the the state, the county and um the country itself is out of touch with everyday, hardworking people. And I think our voices need to be um heard as well and understand any changes that does impact um us as a whole. Um we should have um some say in that and creating access to that. And so I'm hoping to um bring more transparency, um communication, collaboration, um to continue to make the county the best that it is. to continue to make the county the best that it is.
Great, thank you. And Michelle, give us your final pitch.
One of my opponents talked about giving this position full time. But what we need more than ever right now is real experience, bring solutions. And I don't believe being a working mom is a liability, but I think it's an asset. I've met with the sheriff's department, I've toured the jail, I've met with homeless recovery leaders, transportation experts, and I will continue to. I don't think just having spare time is enough. District Two needs leadership and experience and the will to find solutions. If you look at my experience, it stands out and our county needs my experience more than ever. If you want to learn more about me and my campaign, go to www.michellebelkot.com.
Great, well, thank you. Thanks to each of you.